Good to hear you. She started Moms Helping Moms, and this is what it's all about. So this organization started right here in the province. I think you have a big red house in water, right?
Yeah.
I see you on Instagram all the time.
Yeah, so we are a baby diaper, baby supply, and nutritional supply bank located in Moore. We serve the whole state. And this week is all about raising awareness for the fact that one in four people from New Jersey cannot afford the supplies that they need to live a normal life, right? It's a little, no offense, guys, but I love that I'm in the room for this, because everybody gets it. You don't have to explain it. And what you guys are doing is amazing. I've already signed up. So I'm honored to be here with you guys, and thank you so much. Mayor Hal and all you guys, too. Thank you, thank you. This community has been amazing. I mean, when we moved here, it's a lot of because of New Providence.
Well, I remember going to those businesses, and you were in the party, and you were standing there.
Yeah, so that's a lot of thanks to you and all you guys. So thank you. Thank you all. And I love you.
Okay, I need approval of minutes for April 25th, please. Have a motion.
So move.
Second out.
On favor?
Aye.
No, so be it. Make, no, motion, please.
So move.
A second?
On favor?
Aye.
No, so be it. Okay, we have correspondence from County Union, our community block grants for 2024, New Providence Fire Department resignation from Oscar Rojas, and we want to thank him for his contributions. State of New Jersey DEP suspected hazardous discharge that was associated with the removal of a storage tank over at Navy Island South Street. Your comments? No? Okay, we'll go to Council Business. Pete?
Okay, Mayor, Resolution 2023-147 is a salary resolution. This is an additional, the addition of one camp counselor for the summer camp program. Resolution 2023-148 is a resolution appointing Karen Rooney as part-time program coordinator for the Community Activities Department for the Borough of New Providence. Thank you.
Okay, Finance, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2023-149 is a resolution authorizing payment of the attached bill's payable list in the amount of $5,646,506.77. Some of the more significant items on this list included the County of Union for $3,531,121. This was for the second quarter Union County Purpose and Open Space Taxes. We had the City of Summit for $873,343, and that is our annual sewer charge. The depository trust was paid $652,700. That's principal and interest payments due. Gabrielli was paid $238,292, and that is for the Public Works Truck, which has a plow and a salt spreader. And lastly, the state of New Jersey, $132,202 for the May State Health Benefits Premium. Resolution 2023-150 is a resolution providing for the insertion of any special item of revenue in the 2023 budget pursuant of NJS 40A 4-87, Chapter 159, PL 1948, Storm Water Assistance Grant. And this is simply to be able to insert the grant that we received for $15,000 into the budget.
Okay, Christiane, now, Matt.
Thank you. Resolution 151 is a resolution accepting written employment resignation from Arthi Sri Selvraj as part-time program coordinator for Community Activities Department of the Borough of New Providence. We received this resignation last week. Her last day will be June 23rd. As we just appointed her program coordinator, we were searching for a program coordinator, part-time program coordinator, for a spot that we already had open, so we're looking, going back to the, to the candidates that we saw for that position to hopefully, we got a couple of good ones there, so we can fill that position with one of those candidates.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Arthi for, you know, serving, she was terrific. And we wish her well. She's moving, and wish her well in her future endeavors.
So it's two years to, almost two years. I remember it was June when we brought her on board, two years ago.
Yeah. Okay, we have request for the PBA 132, RA 1188, and Our Lady of Peace for RA 1189. And the applications were processed and reviewed. Resolution 152 is appointing Grace Fellerzola as administrative assistant for the Police Department, and she's going to be replacing Donna Sarnum, who is retiring. And then we have a resolution approving the shared service agreement for the special law enforcement officers, which are commonly known as SLEOs, the police officers at the entrances of the school. And we have the, we have an agreement with the Board of Education with that. So we'll go to Public Works. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2023-154, resolution approving requisition number R2301075 for Armstrong, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $17,685, replacement of sanitary sewer manholes. This is a replacement of manhole number 47, located in the wooded area of New Providence train station parking lot by Springfield Avenue. Resolution 2023-155, resolution approving requisition R2301094 for shifonal construction corp in the amount not to exceed $400,000. MCC PC contract number six for 2023 road overlay program. This is approving the requisition for the paving of Grant, Crest, Constance, and Crane Circle by the borough. These roads are being paved using the American Rescue Plan funds. Additional roads will be coming soon, once we figure out and get information from PSE and G that have been working throughout the time, throughout the town for the gas main replacement project. Just one point, that once PSE and G finishes, replaces a main, the road repair needs to sit for about 50 to 60 days before we can account for all the settling that happens before we can pay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll do a council committee reports. I was honored to be invited to a Veterans Moving Wall Memorial, which is in Union. And it's a replica of the Vietnam Veteran Memorial in Washington DC. It had 58,000 names on it. It's quite extraordinary. It was at Beard Temple Park. I enjoyed it. It was very solemn, and, you know, I think anybody my age knew people that were in Vietnam. We had one pioneer that was killed, the only pioneer that was killed, and that was George Robert Hutchison. He died in 1965. And there is a memorial plaque in Veterans' Park for him. The search operation is normal, except that I know people are getting very frustrated with the conditions of the roads in town. And I say that every meeting, please be careful. They, I think there's, I think Bernadette told me 25 roads that are being worked on. There's 42 more to go. So this project that PSE and G is going to be endeavoring in, it's not only this year, it's going to be for a couple of years. So Bernadette can give you more information. And I know there was another water main break in front of Our Lady of Peace. They were out there all night. They got it open about, I guess, 10, 11 o'clock. But, you know, we've been complaining about it for a number of years now, and I think that's like the fifth or sixth blowout, right in that little section. Whenever you replace the whole main. Well, Bernadette was talking to the order company in today, Kelly, and they said they were going to replace the whole main from mountain all the way to Springfield Avenue, which will be another traffic nightmare. So it's, I think you told me it was in the engineering stages, so it won't be right this minute. But just be aware that it's coming. You know, this is, this town's, a lot of its infrastructure is almost 100 years old. So materials that they use back then has a very, it doesn't have a lifespan of the new materials. So it's not only New Providence, but if you go down the line, all this infrastructure work is being done. So I know it's inconvenient. I know it's dangerous. Just be careful driving and running bikes, Alan, and walking. You know, it's, it's going to be a while. So, and I know Bernadette has more to say on this interview. So that's all I have right now.
I just add real quick to that. You know, we had a recent correspondence, and Bernadette kind of out, she outlined an order of how she went about responding to a correspondence and applying for grants for certain big-ticket items, and that takes time. And trying to balance the grants, applying for the grants, and using those grants for the big-ticket items. And today we see, we have art money that we're using, right? These are things that are important, right? They don't affect the taxpayer, right? We're not raising taxes to do these things. So it's a balancing act, right? I mean, I'm just reading through that, it's a tough balancing act to try and, try and make sure you're getting used of all your grant monies, right? And how long it takes to get those things, you know, in the door, right? So it's a big effort. And I know for sure, you know, based on what I saw from Bernadette, you know, they do a really good job of trying to match that.
Oh, one other thing. There's going to be bill coming up in Trenton tomorrow, Thursday, about the municipalities getting back their energy receipt tax. The state took it from all the municipalities to balance their budget years ago. They never should have taken it because it wasn't due to them. It was actually the, all the municipalities money I signed on to a letter for the New Jersey Conference of Mayors and the New Jersey League of Municipalities. And hopefully, the legislature will pass a bill to restore that money back to us. I think at the time when they took it, it was like $300,000 they took from us. And that was years ago. I can imagine what it is now. So hopefully, they'll pass it. I will talk to the Assembly people on Thursday, because I'll be down there. I've already talked to some of the brand makers, and, you know, hopefully, we can get this thing done, and we can fund some more money, and maybe pave more roads. Okay, that's all I have. Diane?
Operations normal.
Okay, Pete?
Yeah, a couple of things. Just a reminder, of course, we have a Memorial Day Parade will be held on Monday, the 29th, at 10:00 AM, rain or shine. So please join us as we march along Springfield Avenue between Central and Academy Streets and honor our fallen heroes. I also had the opportunity on the 17th, along with Councilman Kaminsky, to do a quick tour of our wastewater treatment facility. I know other council people have done this recently as well. Councilman Kaminsky and I did it when we first got onto council, but it was nice to go back there. It's always impressive to hear Anthony Carter Bell speak. He's a man of great passion about his work, as well as great ability. He was also kind enough to give us a tour of some of his recent upgrades, so it was, I found it very impressive. And I'm sure Councilman Kaminsky will echo those thoughts. Thank you.
I agree. Nice to go. Number one, talk to somebody who, who, like Pete says, passionate about his job, right? But number two, he's probably industry, right, in the state. He's just, he really knows his stuff. And to see, you know, we pass all these ordinances and resolutions, and we see all the monies that we're spending. It's nice to go see it actually in place, and I think Councilwoman McKnight mentioned, you know, you can hit off the floor in there. I mean, just keeps it really clean, clean shop. Pretty impressive. Agreed. I did, I was able to attend the New Providence Business Professional Association's meeting at Brunswick. They had Keith Lynch, who's our construction official, out to talk about our sign ordinance and processes, which I thought was nice. One of the things that they did was went around the room, and everybody introduced themselves, what businesses they are, what they represent. Most people live in New Providence, but there are people who work in businesses that don't live here, and talked about why they like New Providence. And I'll tell you, it was a very common theme. Probably 75 or 85% of the people all said, you know, New Providence is just a really nice town. We just really like New Providence. And then we got into this discussion on the sign ordinances and why we have them, and how we want to keep New Providence a nice town by, you know, managing, you know, through our construction officials and our planners and whatnot. So I want to thank Keith for coming out and doing that and educating them. They had some great questions about what they should do if they have ideas about signage and whatnot. He said, "Talk to me. Come, just give me a call. Shoot me an email. Come in, whatever." You know, "Don't, don't go out and spend money on this big sign, and then you can't put it up because it gets old." So that was nice. It was a nice event. Also, the, we had the Safe Places. I know we mentioned that a few times. I just wanted to mention it here. I know it was an article in the tab as well, but our Safe Place initiative, it seeks to combat hate crimes and student bullying through a unified effort between police officials, local businesses, social clubs, and schools. Each public, each police agency in Union County has embraced this program and received Safe Places certification. So we were joking, and I want to thank actually, you know, Dan Han, our Chief of Police, William Daniel, who's the Union County Prosecutor who came out, Detective Michael Corlino, you know, and Linda's gifts, and the kids' EMO.
Urgent.
And urgent care, and Skin Deep for being our initial kickoff. It was really cool. But we were joking that, you know, Union County is the first, it's the first county, not only in New Jersey, but it's the first county in the world that participated 100% in this program. This is, I think, the program started out in Seattle, and it's nice, you know, we kicked that off, and you can see the signs in some of the local businesses around town. It's a place that if you feel threatened, if you feel bullied, or you have any concerns for your safety, that's a safe place. Go in there. They are trained to be able to work with you and call the police and make sure that you're safe. And last thing I had was the cricket pitch. I saw that the cricket pitch installation was completed. And yeah, so keep your eyes and ears out for, I guess we have to let it sit for a little while. Maybe we've got some grass that's got to grow around it and whatnot, but we'll work with the Recreation Department and hopefully have a little ribbon cutting and a first pitch. Your arm ready?
First ball.
First ball, first ball.
Okay.
Okay. The only thing I have tonight is just a reminder, this upcoming, not this Saturday, but the Saturday after, Saturday, June 3rd, is the Unity Day sponsored by the Diversity Committee. That's going to be held down in, right over there, in Centennial Park at the gazebo between 5:00 and 7:30 PM. It is 100% student-driven and student-led. We'll be celebrating various cultures. Various groups from the high school are coming, and they're going to have booths. They're going to have entertainment. There is going to be a food collection area for our link resource pantry. It's going to be a great day, and the conclusion is going to be a holy celebration of colors, which is a great time, a lot of fun. It's a family event. It's an everybody event, so come on down and join us. It's going to be a great day.
Thank you.
Just to add, for little kids in that event, we'll have a little passport around the world. So if you go to every booth, you'll get stamped. It's a nice, nice activity for little kids.
And there'll be games and different activities. So every booth will have its own little varied thing. So it'll be very nice.
Nothing to report.
Nothing. Lisa?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So the library board met, and I'm always so impressed with the friends of the library. They're just such an engaging and dynamic group, and they do so much to bring programming and resources to the library. And a couple of things that I learned that I didn't even know about was that you can get museum passes through the library. So there, if you go on the website, you could check out which museums they participate in, and you can actually check out a four-pack of admission tickets. And then go to the museum, and then you return the passes back when you're done. The Sunday Concert Series is a huge success all the time, and the Friends have scheduled that all the way out to spring 2024. And this sounds fun, too. In November, they're going to be doing a murder mystery right at the library, right? Little fundraiser for the library, but it's going to be murder on the Titanic, and it's going to be on a Saturday night. I think they can only fit like 70 people, so it's first come, first served for that. The staff did have a staff development day on the 3rd of May. Among other things, they visited and collaborated with some other local libraries around here, where they exchanged ideas and came up with different initiatives to bring back to our library right here. And that was it for the library. The Board of Ed met last night, and although there was some business on the agenda, the only thing I could glean out of that was that it's the end of the year, and senioritis is going on, and there's a lot of activities. Among them, the senior breakfast and the senior awards. So we just want, and I know we have a couple senior parents here, just want to say congratulations and good luck to the seniors as they wind down the year and head towards graduation. Always just a really special and fun time of year, everybody. Morgan's Message. So this was something that was a collaboration, well, it was done by the Board of Ed, but overlapped our Mental Health Committee a little bit. So Morgan's Message was an initiative that was brought forward by two of the New Providence High School girls. And they did do it yesterday at the girls' lacrosse game. Mr. Corangelo announced the message and raised awareness for Morgan's Message, which basically strives to eliminate the stigma surrounding mental health within the student-athlete population. So they want to equalize the treatment of both the physical and mental health in athletes. And Morgan, so it's named after a young girl named Morgan, obviously, who was a lacrosse player who did commit suicide. So her family did bring this initiative forward and is passing it on to all the schools. In addition to that, they spoke about the new bell schedule for the middle school. So that's going to just provide some better synergies and provide more offerings for the middle school, and just will make things easier by aligning it with also the high school bell schedule. And I think that was it. The beautification's going to be meeting on June 1st. They have a lot of ideas, so hopefully we can push, get some of those pushed through.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. So roads, 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 roads. That's the talk of the town. So as Councilman Kogan mentioned, that we have a current PO out there for Constance, Crest, Grant, Crane, and Hillary. Those are our initial streets that we'll be paving as a borough this year. There's 15 additional streets that the borough will be picking up late, late summer, early fall that piggyback off of the PSE and G pipe replacement, main replacement. Additionally, we have the fiscal year 2022 NJDOT grant that's in progress right now on Bromley, Woodcrest, and Fairmont. So those should be wrapping up probably in, you know, close out by late August. But some of those streets are coming to the end, where they're getting ready to be paved as well. So a lot of paving going on there. If you look on the PSE and G tab of the website under Projects, there is listed 20 streets that PSE and G intends to pave, hopefully in June. We, so in total, in phase one of this project, there were 35 streets that went through on phase one alone. They are currently working through phase two, so they're broken up. PSE and G will be paving the streets that were the longest since we've dug them up. And then the borough will come through after the rest of them settle and do the rest of them. So there's about 40 streets just there for that, and then phase two is happening as we speak. So it's still going to be a rocky road out there. Literally. So I wanted to give you guys an update on the phone service, and I tried to get this into layman's terms, and it is still very convoluted, but in very, very, very high level. The borough contracts with a company that uses a third-party provider for our phone service. One of the circuits went down. They've replaced it. It was an old copper line. They came in on Monday and basically brought a new circuit. That circuit didn't work. They brought another circuit. So we think at this point, we have been remediated, and that our phone should be up and running with no issues. They've moved us off the old copper circuit, and we should be good to move forward. Hopefully, we'll keep our fingers crossed. The website, we're continuing to work with the vendor to ensure that all of our content has been migrated correctly. We're finding some errors in the migration. So departments are going through to make sure that stuff is still there, not missing, accurate spelling, link checks, that kind of stuff. On Monday, June 5th, borough employees will be in a training session between 1:00 and 4:00 to learn how to use the backend of the website, uploading documents, making edits for different pages. And on last Friday, the borough was closed to the public for staff development. The borough is part of the Garden State Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, who is a collaboration of about 40 different municipalities that forms together to provide insurance for, at a lower rate than we would get on the free market, if you would. They come in and they have a group, the NIP group, that does training for us, both in person and online. So we did our harassment training that's required every two years, diversity training, sensitivity training, and ethics. So we had over 40 people participate in that, and the rest of the people who are not available will do it online. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I just, I noticed one thing on the, what do you call it, Planning and Development Report. I thought, you said, "Other noteworthy information." The Village Shopping Center submitted for improvements on the site, a paver patio that will construct outside of Starbucks and Chipotle, and will include a bike rack. That's awesome. That's really good stuff. So do we know is that, do we know is, do they need a variance for that? Or is that just, they just?
Keith can give them the variance, so they don't actually, it's a builder's, they don't have to go before the planning board.
Yeah, so that's, that's really good stuff.
Bernadette, one quick question regarding the communication issues we've been having. With a, with a contract that's with a government agency, are there some minimum service level requirements or guarantees, whether it's equipment, response times, those type of things that are included?
Pete, I can tell you that there is probably more than 100 emails back and forth between me and the provider. They were working on it. They were trying to identify what was wrong. Thankfully, the 911 system was working, so it didn't affect us in that way. It was just the communication between us and the outside. And our phones internally were working as well, so it was really just external.
This time we have public comments. Anybody wishing to address council? Yeah, Brian.
Actually, it's time just to follow up, because Pete brought up a good point about.
Can you tell me your address?
Oh, Brian Haas, 49 Bradford Street. So Pete brought up a good point about service level agreements, and I just wondered if we do have such a thing for things like the communication. I know the field I'm in, there are certain agreements that.
I know the field I'm in, there are certain agreements that are within the contract, and sometimes there's penalties for not meeting those service level agreements, so I just wondered if we have anything like that.
So our provider is, is refunding us for all of the days, and I believe it was the entire month they're giving us back for not being able to provide the required service that we were seeking. Like I said, they, they, it, it was out of SpectraTel is, is the company that we, we are provided with, and it was the third party after them that was having issues.
Okay, so just refunding for the service that was not provided.
Well, and like I said, they were working around the clock, literally, to, to get us back up and running, but it was just a little bit more complicated than anyone had anticipated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? See, no one, I think quite a bit of public comments closed. Need formal action? Need motion for items one through ten, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Welcome, please.
Mrs. Belisca?
Aye.
Mr. Disarna?
Aye.
Mr. Kaminski?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Kogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to go into the executive session, resolution twenty twenty-three, three eight. Please read the title.
Resolution establishing May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three as the date, and eight ten PM as the time, and the municipal center is a place for the holding of a special session of the mayor and council of the borough of New Providence to discuss legal matters involving Joseph D. Parisi lawsuit.
So moved.
I'll second.
Welcome, please.
Mrs. Belisca?
Aye.
Mr. Disarna?
Aye.
Mr. Kaminski?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Kogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to thank the public for coming. Have a safe Memorial Day, enjoy the parade. It's one of the few things that's been going off ever since I was a kid. I remember how proud I was when I was a cup guy, I actually got to hold the American flag, walking down Springfield Avenue, so it was a lot of fun. Thanks.